It is seven eleven and it's time to call this meeting to order. Everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Taylor, would you like to lead us in the open prayer?
Sure. Um, we can, first I'm gonna put a moment of silence for our qualified firefighter Jeffrey Arms. Thank you. Dear Lord, please give us the strength to and the courage to make the decisions necessary to move the city forward in a progressive way. Please give us the strength to heal through the loss of a family member, friend, colleague, you know, an employee of the city. He's definitely missed right now and he's definitely left a hole and needs healed. And we just ask for you to give us strength and allow us to stay, stay together and help each other out, lift each other up and continue to push forward in your name and prayer.
Amen. I have a few calls though. Um, Dan Sherman will be a few minutes late tonight.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Sherman, Mr. Dumpy?
Here.
Ms. Grant?
Here.
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 Alright, everyone had a chance to review the minutes from last, the last meeting. Any questions? Any council discussion on that? Okay, motion to approve.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Alright, do we have any comments on anything? See anything? Not yet? Alright, uh, business and organizational comments? Uh, committee discussions. I believe we're having a utilities meeting Wednesday after Mayor's Court. Should be around seven, I think we're on schedule for seven thirty. That should be safe.
Do you want to bump to the following week, sir?
Not unless you, do you need it?
Well, I mean, we're not gonna be able to do anything before we go through finance.
Okay, so what's up to you?
Bump till Monday?
That's fine.
Um, we're gonna have a planning and a settlement meeting Monday the seventeenth at six thirty PM.
Okay, so how long do you need?
Only an hour.
Hour, so we'll do seven thirty?
For utilities?
Perfect. Okay.
We'd need a finance meeting that week as well. I hope we can stack them up and go late on Monday.
Put the card on that one. Wonder if she wants to do?
Three meetings on Monday? You don't have to work an all day?
No. Maybe we can do something this week, maybe last Thursday or?
Well, we gotta go through the other committees first.
Thought you said we had to do finance first.
No, I, we need utility and then?
To approve it and then send it to finance.
Oh, okay, yeah, we'll have it one day.
Okay. Anything? Just to let you all know, something, um, from the Parks and Rec, uh, the pool house was broken into at one time or another and fifteen hundred dollars worth of equipment got stolen. There are procedures and policies gonna be in place to double check that in the future.
You mean the pool house at Polyfield?
The pool house at Polyfield, not our pool house, the old pool house, so. Um, and they're gonna be, need some dugout repair, which they're gonna better to finance to these guys to see where, where they can get the money from.
Probably like cameras still, I know.
I think it was before. I mean, the, the baseball equipment hasn't been moved for two years. So now all of a sudden, you know, you go in to go counting it and it's like, ooh, it's all gone, so.
Also prior to the, uh, cameras, they vandalized the bathrooms, the brand new bathrooms down there. So they're disrepairing it now.
We might just have to board it up to save everything.
They, uh, they blocked it or they secured it better and PD checks it multiple times a night. We haven't had a problem since.
Alright, um, anything else? Anything, Corey? Okay. Alright, so we are to department updates. Go ahead, Jason.
So as of last Friday, we patched fifty-two potholes upon Canal Street. I know it doesn't seem like a lot. It's very time consuming cutting all the holes out, patching up, sealing it. And then we were having quite a bit of weather last week where we couldn't get out and do it. We plan on taking that back up again tomorrow. I'm working on those. When we're done with Canal Street, we plan on moving to Columbus and then Meyer Street. Just jumping back and forth, both sides of the highway for Canal Street. The new pool pump's in.
Nice.
We plan on having that installed this week. Next week, we are installing a new meter on the pool so we can account for water loss. And the pool has to be power washed. We're hoping by midweek next week we're filling it. Just a little bit cleaning in there. With weather permitting, the Church Street project will be done Wednesday. They, they called me last week and they're planning on asphalt in the Wednesday. With weather permitting, me and Scott worked that way today. Everything looks pretty good. They were getting the base in. I talked to Rock River today. They're expecting to be in on Monday toward finished Canal or Chestnut Street. Weather permitting. They're, they're on a job now. They have a couple of days left, so they've given themselves the rest of this week to, to finish that job coming on Monday and get everything taken care of down there. Which, speaking of Chestnut Street, I know I said something last meeting for people at home to hear. They gotta pay attention to signs. I came out of Speedway just this evening and, uh, I had two cars almost hit me head on coming down at the wrong way. So you need to watch yourselves down through there. That is one way right now, east to west. The backboards for Polyfield down at the basketball court, we had a hard time finding somebody that was able to repair those. Tri-County's carpentry class stepped up and volunteered to repair those for us. We're hoping to have those back the end of this week, beginning of next week, so we can get them back up for the summer for all the kids down there that play basketball and are really missing those right now with some of the nice weather we've had. And the street sweeper's been out. We've been running the new schedule. It runs four AM to eight AM, Monday through Friday. Weather permitting, last week or a few days, we couldn't run it. We can't run it in the corn down rain. Seems to be working out real well. Nobody's complaining of dust. They went down the south side of Canal Street today. Me and Scott were out and about and it looked really, really good. Really went out this morning and done it. Just trying to do the best we can. Weather's not real helpful in the spring in Ohio. Since the last meeting, we've had twenty water leaks. One, those include, we had one on Saint John, one on Mill Street, Walnut Street, we've had a couple, Fairview Street, Oak Street, Clinton Street, Pleasant View Avenue. Saint John and Mill Street are included in the water project that I believe they're gonna talk about this evening, which should be starting up midsummer. So hopefully we get those taken care of. So that's, we have a lot of problems with Saint John and Mill, so.
Any questions?
Um, would it be possible to maybe add Poplar Street on the frequent pothole list? At least maybe the intersection. Some of them are really bad. Thank you.
Yeah, we, we have a lot of bad holes throughout town.
Which is a pretty popular road there.
We, we get messages daily. I mean, we're, we're doing the best we can with what we have. But yeah, I'll definitely get it on there.
Great, thank you.
You've been just doing concrete on Canal though, right?
We've done asphalt too.
Oh, have you?
Yeah, 'cause the concrete takes exceptionally long time to do. And the, the way you gotta, the size, you gotta cut the holes out. So we, we've got four yards of asphalt on Canal also.
Alright, anybody got anything else? Alright, thank you, Jason. Who's next? Mr. Barber?
Yep, well.
Chief?
So tonight I would like to, uh, I think you will give, uh, council basically, uh, an update on the fire we had. There have been a lot of rumors floating around town. Some, uh, I don't even know where they come from. None that makes much sense. But I thought I should be denied as a dress counsel and explain to council exactly what happened on this fire. Uh, there was no negligence or anything like that. And quite frankly, that is just disrespectful to the firefighters that were on the scene. So about four after, four minutes after five on the second, we were alerted for a structural fire at four twenty-six Pleasant View Avenue. Firefighters, Brammer and Arms were on duty. They responded in our first out engine, engine twenty-five-one. Made an aggressive attack, had a good knockdown on the fire. A second engine arrived. They helped. Some initial attack on the C side and D side of the structure. I followed in behind that truck in my command vehicle. And then I was followed by another firefighter, firefighter Choco, and our tanker, our tender. Uh, when I arrived on the scene, firefighter Arms was actually outside of the structure. Because he was the one, he was actually what we call the incident commander, so he was outside of the structure at that time. He did not have an air pack on. He was performing the duties of incident commander and establishing water supply between two trucks. So he was actually taking one hosey connecting it to another truck to relay water from that truck to the first truck. Myself and firefighter Choco, uh, resumed initial fire attack on the inside of the structure. While inside, we were alerted by our fire department photographer that would have on scene that firefighter Arms was down. At that time, our, basically on scene tactics went from fire extinguishment to, uh, patient care. We immediately exited the structure and we were actually with Jeff performing CPR immediately as soon as he hit the ground. We, myself and firefighter Brammer performed CPR until Athens County EMS arrived for ALS care and transport. We then packaged firefighter Arms, got him in the squad. Squad left the roof line with two firefighters, actually three firefighters on the truck, working on Jeff. And of course, we ended up calling it that night. I've heard rumors of negligence floating around town. Um, I've seen very poor interviews by ten DB that painted a very different picture. I want everybody that's listening to know, I was there with Jeff the entire time from when he exited the structure and was without an air pack until very late that night at the hospital. I wanted to clear that up. I wanted to make sure that council knew, uh, these men and women did an extraordinary job. They're patient care. EMS care was top notch and he was in the best atmosphere that he could have been when he succumbed to those medical risks. That's all I have.
Thank you, chief.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thank you very much. Alright. Who's next?
That's it.
That's it? Okay, alright, so. Alright.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, chief, for everything that's been going on. Um, I myself have heard a lot of rumors. Very aggravating. But thank you for handling it professionally there.
So let's moving on. Ordinance thirty-three dash twenty-one. Uh, we're up for second reading.
An ordinance permitting the city manager or the city auditor to file a lien against the property taxes of property for non-payment of sanitation bill. Whereas it is desirable to permit the city manager or the city auditor to file a lien against the property taxes of property for non-payment of sanitation bill. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, following. The city manager or the city auditor are permitted to file a lien against the property taxes of property for non-payment of sanitation bill. This ordinance shall become effective at the earliest date provided by law, fully enacted by council on second reading, the tenth day of May, two thousand twenty-one.
Right, any council discussion on this?
Jerry, is that like a twelve? I mean, what are we talking about, money wise?
Like a hundred and twenty-two dollars a year, something like that. I mean, if they don't pay it.
Yeah, so this is, this is something we discussed, I think, back around Christmas when we started the water and sewer assessments and we knew the garbage would come up, uh, when we started. Basically for non-payment, we're gonna assess once a year, uh, closed accounts. Uh, it would be well over ninety days and they receive too many letters and calls between now and then.
That's fine. I was just thinking, would it be worth it for twelve dollars to, that's?
Oh, yeah, it would be like, it would be over time and a crew charge.
Okay.
One thing I, I didn't realize, uh, just for the council's awareness, was that the county auditor, I thought they took fees just out of property taxes. Turns out they take fees as well out of the assessments. So eventually we'll probably ask you to approve some sort of fee recoup. So like in other cities and townships have like a five percent assessment fee for these types of things, but we'll talk about it later.
Any other questions? Okay. Motion to approve. No move.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yeah.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes. Yes. Alright. Go ahead. Alright, ordinance thirty-four dash twenty-one. Need someone to introduce it, please?
I'll introduce it.
Thank you.
An ordinance consenting to the assignment of engineering contracts with StanTech to DLZ and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city of Nelsonville has been informed that DLZ has purchased the business of StanTech Engineering for the city of Nelsonville and desires the city of Nelsonville to consent to the assignment of its contract to DLZ. And whereas the city of Nelsonville understands engineer Michael Betts will be moving to DLZ and will still be working on the Nelsonville project until completion. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio, that the city of Nelsonville consents to the assignment of the following StanTech engineering contracts to DLZ. Church Street instability project dated February seventh, two thousand twenty. Water system improvement project dated May twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty. Regional wastewater treatment plant improved project, improvement project dated September twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty. And regional wastewater treatment plant class collection improvement project dated November ninth, two thousand twenty. A copy of such requested attached heretofore and incorporated herein by reference. The foregoing ordinance was adopted and all actions and all deliberations of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio, were conducted in open meetings to the public in compliance with all applicable legal requirements, including section one twenty-one point twenty-two of the Ohio Revised Code. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to Ohio Revised Code seven thirty-one point thirty because the immediate passage of the ordinance is necessary so that the necessary assignment can be timely completed on these projects in progress. And this ordinance shall be of full force and effect upon its adoption. Fully enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules, tenth day of May, two thousand twenty-one.
Everybody can be stamped with one. Okay, any more discussion needed? Motion is, I'll second that.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yeah.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Motion to a down. Second.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yeah.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yeah.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Yeah. Alright. Ordinance thirty-five dash twenty-one. Need someone to introduce it?
I'll introduce it.
Thank you.
An ordinance engaging Dennis Swally of Dennis Moore Law Firm and bond counsel for the issuance of six million, seven hundred, six thousand dollars bond issuance and, and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city of Nelsonville needs to engage bond counsel for the issuance of six million, seven hundred, six thousand dollars bond for a true project. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio, that the city of Nelsonville engages Dennis Swally of Dennis Moore Law Firm as bond counsel for six million, seven hundred, six thousand dollars sanitary sewer system revenue bonds, series two thousand twenty-one of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio, in accordance with the engagement letter attached heretofore and incorporated herein by reference. The foregoing ordinance was adopted and all actions and all deliberations of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio, were conducted in open meetings to the public in compliance with all applicable legal requirements, including section one twenty-one point twenty-two of the Ohio Revised Code. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to Ohio Revised Code seven thirty-one point thirty because the immediate passage of the ordinance is necessary so that the necessary engagement can be timely completed for the project in process. And this ordinance shall be of full force and effect upon its adoption. Fully enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules, the tenth day of May, two thousand twenty-one.
Any council discussion on this? Alright, move this, I'll second that.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Jones? Yeah.
Motion to a down.
Second. Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yeah.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, ordinance, here's the best thing, you only have three. Ordinance thirty-six dash twenty-one. Need someone to introduce it, please?
Oh, I'll introduce it.
Thank you.
An ordinance authorizing the issuance of six million, seven hundred, six thousand dollars sanitary sewer system revenue bonds, series two thousand twenty-one by the city of Nelsonville, Ohio, pursuant to article eighteen of the Ohio Constitution for the purpose of paying part of the cost of certain sanitary sewer improvements of the city as additional parity bonds secured by the provisions of ordinance fourteen dash twenty passed May tenth, two thousand twenty, prescribing the forms of such bonds and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city of Nelsonville, Ohio owns and operates a sanitary sewer collection, treatment and disposal system to serve the city and its inhabitants. Whereas by ordinance fourteen dash twenty passed May tenth, two thousand twenty, this council, one, determined the necessity of issuing an initial series of the one million sanitary sewer system revenue bonds, series twenty twenty, dated March seventeenth, two thousand twenty, to acquire, construct and install improvements to the utility, specifically the acquisition of the Bookdole Sewer Treatment Plant from the county of Athens and construction and installation of improvements to the regional wastewater treatment plant, together with any necessary interest in real property and appurtenances to such improvements. And two, provide for the security of the original bonds and also additional bonds thereafter issued on a parity therewith. And whereas the original bonds were executed, sold and delivered to the United States of America acting through the Rural Utilities Service, United States Department of Agriculture. And there are now outstanding one million dollars in principal amount of the original bond. And whereas this council has determined that it is necessary for the city to acquire, construct and install certain additional improvements to the utility consisting of improvements to the wastewater treatment plant and appurtenance thereto. And whereas the city has applied for, A, a loan from the government to finance a portion of the original cost of the project in an amount not to exceed six million, seven hundred, six thousand dollars. And B, a grant from the government in the amount of nine million, five hundred and forty thousand dollars. And whereas this council, after due investigation, has determined that it is necessary and proper for the council to authorize the issuance of six million, seven hundred, six thousand dollars of revenue bonds pursuant to article eighteen of the Constitution of Ohio as a second series of bonds under the terms of the ordinance to evidence the government loan to be secured by the ordinance and the revenues with the original bond and any other outstanding bond. And whereas this council finds all conditions pursuant, pursuant to the issuance of and sale of series twenty twenty-one bonds authorized hereby, including the obtaining of all consents as, as are required by the ordinance, have been met or can be met prior to the closing of such bond issuance. And whereas the government has agreed to purchase the series two thousand twenty-one bonds upon the terms set forth herein. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, state of Ohio, that the six million, seven hundred, six thousand dollars sanitary sewer system revenue bond ordinance attached heretofore and incorporated herein by reference was adopted. It is hereby certified that all acts, conditions and things required to exist happen and be performed preceding to any issuance of the series two thousand twenty-one bond now exists. Have happened and have been performed as required by law and that no limitation of indebtedness or taxation, either statutory or constitutional, has been exceeded in issuing the series two thousand twenty-one bond. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to Ohio Revised Code seven thirty-one point thirty because the immediate passage of the ordinance is necessary so that the necessary paperwork for the sanitary sewer system revenue bond project can be timely filed. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. Fully enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules, the tenth day of May, two thousand twenty-one.
I missed the, can you start, can you start? There was only four minutes and twenty-two seconds.
Well, that was fun.
You did great. Alright, do you, does council have any discussion on this? Okay, alright, motion to suspend.
I'll move to suspend.
Second.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes. Motion should go down. Second. Pick one.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yeah.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Alright. Ordinance, there's some more. Ordinance thirty-seven dash twenty-one. Need someone to introduce it, please?
I'll introduce it.
An ordinance adopting the loan resolution authorizing and providing FDR the incurrence of indebtedness for the purpose of providing a portion of the cost of acquiring, constructing, enlarging, improving and/or extending its construction of the new regional sanitary sewer system facility to serve an area lawfully within its jurisdiction to serve by issuance of bonds in the amount of two million dollars and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city of Nelsonville, Ohio intends to obtain assistance from the United States Department of Agriculture acting under the provision of the Consolidated Farm and Rural Development Act in the planning, financing and supervision of undertaking described herein and the purchasing of bonds lawfully issued in the event that no other acceptable purchaser for such bonds is found by the city. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, state of Ohio, that the two million dollar loan resolution attached heretofore and incorporated herein by reference is adopted. It is hereby certified that all acts, conditions and things required to exist happen and be performed preceding to any issuance of the series two thousand twenty-one bond now exists. Have happened and have been performed as required by law and that no limitation of indebtedness or taxation, either statutory or constitutional, has been exceeded in the issuing of series two thousand twenty-one bond. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to Ohio Revised Code seven thirty-one point thirty because the immediate passage of the ordinance is necessary so that the necessary paperwork for so that the necessary paperwork for the sanitary sewer system project can be timely filed, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption, duly enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules on the tenth day of May, two thousand twenty-one.
Okay. Any council discussion on this? Just that, Susan, there is a typo in the heading. F D O R is supposed to be four.
Oh, okay.
Four. A door. Yeah. It's in the warrior language. All right. Motion to suspend.
Second.
Second. Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Motion to adopt. Second.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Right. You're not done yet.
No, I'm not.
Three more. Get on the daily host line. Gary's really flexing his muscles.
Yeah.
All right. Ordinance thirty-eight dash twenty-one. Need someone to introduce it, please? I'll introduce it. All right.
An ordinance tentatively awarding a waterline construction contract to Rock River Construction, L T D, and a water meter construction contract to Ferguson Waterworks, subject to final approval of funding for the project from the Ohio E P A and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city of Nelsonville seeks to complete a waterline and water meter project, and whereas the city of Nelsonville has applied to the Ohio E P A for a portion of the funding for the waterline and water meter project. Now therefore be ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Ohio, that the city of Nelsonville tentatively awards the waterline construction contract to Rock River Construction, L T D, and the water meter construction contract to Ferguson Waterworks in accordance with the engineer's bid recommendation letter attached heretofore and incorporated herein by reference, subject to final approval of funding for the project from the Ohio E P A. The foregoing ordinance was adopted and all actions and all deliberations of the city of Nelsonville, Ohio were conducted in open meetings to the public in compliance with all applicable legal requirements, including Section one twenty-one point twenty-two of the Ohio Revised Code. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to Ohio Revised Code seven thirty-one point thirty because the immediate passage of the ordinance is necessary so that necessary paperwork for the waterline and water meter project can be timely filed, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption, duly enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules the tenth day of May, two thousand twenty-one.
Any council discussion on this matter? Mr. President, you might have Michael indicate when we're going to E P A approve.
All right, yes. I'd also like to just mention briefly, we're on the good side of things on this. We're one hundred and fifty thousand under the engineer's estimate for the project, so the market is really good. And I want to give Scott and Jason some credit, we worked to get a meter manufacturer that's going to be, have a good solution for the city at a really good rate, so. Funding will be officially approved last Thursday of the month in June, meaning construction will probably get started in July. So they need, they need this stuff pretty far in advance to get it on their agenda, will be on the agenda for the June. After funding. That's half grand, half one.
Mr. Bets, what's meters that we assigned to do?
Master meter?
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Motion to suspend?
No move. Second.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Let's start with you.
You start with us.
Okay.
All right. Two more. Ordinance thirty-nine dash twenty-one. Someone to introduce it, please? Oh, please. Thank you.
An ordinance amending the two thousand twenty-one appropriations ordinance to appropriate from the unappropriated balance the following. The sum of seven thousand dollars from the general fund number one hundred to line item number one zero zero dash three seven zero dash two one one zero zero audit fee. Seven thousand dollars from the water fund number seven hundred to line item number seven zero zero dash three seven zero dash two one one zero zero audit fee. And seven thousand dollars from the sewer fund number seven fifty to line item number seven five zero dash three seven zero dash two one one zero zero audit fee. Whereas appropriations ordinance needs to be amended to appropriate monies for audit fees. Now therefore be ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Adams County, Ohio's policy. The two thousand twenty-one appropriations are amended to appropriate the following sum from the unappropriated balance to the designated line item. Seven thousand dollars from the general fund number one hundred to line item number one zero zero dash three seven zero dash two one one zero zero audit fee. Seven thousand dollars from the water fund number seven hundred to line item number seven zero zero dash three seven zero dash two one one zero zero audit fee. And seven thousand dollars from the sewer fund number seven fifty to line item number seven five zero dash three seven zero dash two one one zero zero audit fee. The total appropriations are increased by said amount. This ordinance shall become effective at the earliest date provided by law, duly enacted by council on second reading on the twenty-fourth day of May, two thousand twenty-one.
Taylor?
Yes, sir. These audit fees are for what? So, these are, I want to make a quick point of order just on the point of order, Mr. President. The audit, the line items are actually called contract services, but these are for audit fees. The state audits us every year.
Okay.
Charges us. That's part of the cost. The other cost is the, any day now ending state investigation from the state who bills the city, which is part of the former deputy auditor's restitution.
Okay.
For which we received our first hundred dollars today.
Okay.
Nice little small step of the project.
There we go. All right. Well, I just wanted everyone to know what that was for. Thank you for the update. Appreciate the information.
Yep.
All right. That is just on first reading, so. All right. Ready?
Yes.
We're almost there. Part break here. Part break here. All right. Ordinance forty dash twenty-one. Need someone to introduce it, please?
I'll introduce it.
Thank you.
Thank you. An ordinance pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section one twenty-four point thirty-nine C, adopting a policy that employees who die while employed by the city shall receive payment for unused sick leave the same as if they had retired and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city of Nelsonville has been informed that it may adopt the policy to allow city employees who die while employed to receive payment for unused sick leave as if they had retired. And whereas the city of Nelsonville wants to add this benefit to employees who die while employed with the city. Now therefore be ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Ohio, that the city of Nelsonville adopts the policy pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section one twenty-four point thirty-nine C, that employees who die while employed, employees shall receive payment for unused sick leave the same as if they had retired. This ordinance shall be effective May second, two thousand twenty-one. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to Ohio Revised Code seven thirty-one point thirty because the immediate passage of the ordinance is necessary so that the policy can be effective as soon as possible, so payment can be made to Jeff Arm, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption, duly enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules the tenth day of May, two thousand twenty-one.
Any council discussion?
Just take four instead of two.
Can. Well, the payment is actually two, yeah. There's probably is two. All right.
I'll move this as friend.
Thank you. Sorry.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Motion to adopt. Second.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yeah.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
All right. So. Ordinance. City manager's report.
Good evening, everyone.
Oh, wow. The Great White Hoop, there he is. Ladies and gentlemen, that's not a clown feet, that is Mr. Sherman.
All just super funny tonight.
There he is.
I'm going to have to work for a little bit.
Oh, my gosh. Who is that? Anyway. Mr. Frank, please. Mr. Frank, please. Leave it off.
Did you love me?
I did.
Take it away, sir.
All righty. Excuse me. First thing I want to do is start out about Jeff. His passing has sent a shockwave through City Hall. Everybody's been affected and everybody's come together to show him, show him respect and honor that he deserves as we took him to his spinal resting. The fire department guys did a phenomenal job and very first class considering the circumstances. Also, all the resources available are being provided and utilized for anybody that might need that after, after the event itself and there's a multitude of resources, the biggest thing, I just want to let you know that they're being taken care of. Also, real quick, just to clear this up, thanks for passing that ordinance, we paid it last week. We paid out a whole of the benefits and that she's due all of Jeff's stuff, so she had as much money as possible by last Thursday, so we just want to get everything out. Again, rumors of not taking care of the spouse, so. But that said, everybody's making do. The, for next week, we're going to start the auctions here, plan on starting last week. This includes getting rid of the Hummers miscellaneous property and miscellaneous tools and items around. The, let's see. The other thing is a nomination for former firefighter Gardner Riggs has requested to return to the fire department as a part-time firefighter, and I'd like to ask council to instate him as a temporary part-time firefighter and.
So that is, that is from. Mr. Barber?
Yep.
Okay, so. Motion to point to approve the temporary hiring of Mr. Gardner as a temporary part-time fireman. You need a termination.
Say again?
No more.
Termination.
No more than six months.
That's, that's again.
No more than six months.
Without that, that's what we did. It's temporary because we've moved time initial up the temporary full-time position. So the word temporary has to be given for Gardner so that it doesn't violate the statute of rights for the part-time firefighter.
Somebody needs, thank you.
I'll second. Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Can I vote?
You forgot Mr. Sherman.
Oh.
I forgot.
I'm incapable.
That's true. I had my hat to you, Mr. Sherman, what would you do?
Yes.
All right. What else you got there?
I got, excuse me, one more thing. I got to read it here from Mr. Bear. It says, "The Nelsonville Green Team is looking for volunteers who are eighteen years or older and willing to be able to help and possibly make the commitment to volunteer once a month for various green projects around Nelsonville. Volunteers will need to be physically able to pull weeds and perform general cleanup tasks. The Nelsonville Green Team's second project will be on Saturday, May fifteenth and May twenty-second at ten a.m. The group will be doing much-needed cleanup around U S Route thirty-three entrance and exit ramps in the city. With Memorial Day and Alumni Weekend approaching, it would look wonderful for the city to look its best. Persons interested in volunteering will meet on the Public Square at ten a.m. to organize into sections. Volunteers need to bring their own gloves and garden tools. We recommend volunteers have their names on any gloves and tools. Anyone having any questions, contact Nan Schaefer by email at nanny, N A N N I E, goat, G O A T, eight one one, at hotmail dot com. We look forward to a great turnout."
Thank you.
And that's all I have, sort of putting your guys' questions.
Thanks to Nan for putting that on. All right. Down to the good of the order.
Oh, we have questions?
Anybody have any questions? Michael may have somebody wants to introduce.
I don't know if we already went over this or not, but when are we starting potholes? We've already.
We've already addressed that. If you're here on time, you can watch the video.
So does that work for them, Mr. Booth?
Well, some of us don't plan our time very well, Mr. Sherman. So anyway, no, they've been working on it. Fifty-two potholes replaced on Canal Street. Their next thing, they're going to be moving to Myers, Poplar, and they're going to be going back and forth Columbus Street and getting the rest of them. They're using asphalt and concrete. They've used over four yards of asphalt. Anything else?
One thing I would ask, when you guys get time, I constantly hear complaints about the prison hill. I guess there's that monster one down there. It looks like it'll swallow a car.
Yeah, yeah, there's a couple up there by Cory's hospital, running the.
Don't want him to fall break his ankle.
Run the truck.
All right. Mr. President. Yes, sir. I think Michael may know.
Absolutely.
Please.
Go ahead.
First, thank you for passing the ordinance with the assignment and putting faith in this here. I want to introduce Ron. Ron's one of the owners of the LZ and how he's talking tonight. Sweet young.
Yeah. Ron Rajadaksa, I'm one of the owners of our business. We're a family-owned business. We've worked in Ohio. My dad actually started out as a state employee up in Columbus, and so I just wanted to say thank you for, for assigning over the contract to us. We promise to do a fantastic job and maintain even better service than what you're used to before with all the other existing terms and conditions of the contract. So if you have any questions, please let us know. Absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Good, the order will start off with Mr. Taylor.
Okay.
Mr. Sherman?
Yeah, I would like to echo the city manager on his comments. Fire department goes very well professional. He should be very proud of his crewmen for the way they conducted themselves as best they could and at the fire with what happened and also at the services, so. You want to type chip, awesome, we appreciate that. Oh, June fifth. Finished campers on the square. I'll be plugging that for now until then.
Is that all you got then?
That's all that.
Okay. There it is. I had to laugh or I'm going to cry. I would like to echo Dan's comments. It was a, a great funeral. Very well put on, very well organized. I never want to hear backpipes again. I mean, that was very chilling, very moving. I've never seen anything like that. I hope we never have to go through that again as a city if I cried. So I mean, you know, it's just one of those things, so. I would like to thank Chief and his fire department for organizing that and getting it together. I'd also like to thank the Arms family and Jeff for all their, all the things that have happened. All the things that have happened. And there's just not, not the words to say it, so moving on. Ms. Grant?
Well, I kind of just have to follow you, everyone, please just keep Jeff. Jeff's family, the fire department and the city, your thoughts and your prayers and they're going to need us for a long time to come.
Thank you. Mr. Booth?
I'll say, God bless the Arms family. If you guys could. Ms. Jones, oh, I'd like to thank Ms. Jones for getting the flower arrangement together, she was on the, she was on the ball on that. I was kind of numb and she sent a text out, she took care of that for us from the city council, I'd like to thank her for that, thank you.
Of course, again, just extending my condolences to the Arms family and to the fire department. And to Chief and let your team know that we're here for them, if they need anything. The only other thing I wanted to add is that the Nelsonville High School alumni will not be having their big banquet this year, again, due to COVID. So, some classes might have individual reunions, just so people know not to discuss that big reunion that physically happens at the Elks. Memorial Day weekend this year.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Jones. All right. We have to go, we have a motion to go into executive. Oh, no, we don't. I don't have any. It's just a, you do. Motion to go into executive session. O R C for one twenty-one point two, two personal legal matters. Inviting, inviting in Mr. Frank. Mr. Hunter.
Warner?
Yeah. You have to. Second, someone, second.
And Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Grant? Yes. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yeah.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
All right, need a motion to come out of executive session?
I'll make an motion. Thank you.
Call the roll. We started with Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Carr?
Yes.
Ms. Grant? Ms. Grant? Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
You?
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.